Okay, we've returned from our executive session that lasted a total of 20 minutes. And we are back in session and we are to our consent agenda. Is there anyone willing to offer a motion for the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Deener and a second by Councilmember Lucarelli. Any comments or questions about the consent agenda this evening? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, nobody questioned the million dollar payment to the Department of Commerce. It got my attention today, it was in the register. So, but it's our payment on the sewer plant, I'm told. So, passes through us, so a million dollars. So, anyway, it was appropriate, I was assured. So, where do our business items? The first is Mr. Bond. And he is going to talk to us about the comprehensive plan, adoption of an ordinance, revising the city's comprehensive plan, Mr. Bond.
All right, before you tonight are the 2020 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. These have worked their way through the Planning Commission with a recommendation to approve and have made stops at the Land Use Committee and the Transportation Committee. The amendments consist of three parts. There are city-initiated amendments, including updating tables in the land use element, updating the utilities element to update our project lists for water, sewer, and stormwater, and then updating a map in the transportation element as well as the six-year Transportation Improvement Plan, as well in the 20-year Transportation Improvement Plan. And then finally, updating documents adopted by reference in Appendix B. Additionally, there are city-initiated map amendments that are just cleaning up some inconsistencies between the zoning map, which in all of these cases is correct, but the comprehensive plan was incorrect. And finally, the Geiger Road LLC text amendment, they had requested that we amend our center boundary for the Bethel and Cedric Center. In the event that we amend our tax abatement code later, we're proposing that you have to be in a designated center within the comprehensive plan. And so this would put a parcel that is currently split entirely within the center boundary. So, the staff recommendation today is to approve the ordinance revising the 2020 Comprehensive Plan as presented.
Questions for Mr. Bond? Comments?
I did want to add one thing I forgot to mention. The Transportation Committee raised a couple of minor issues with the tip, including we're applying for a grant to put sidewalks in along Lippert. And so that project was added to the tip. And I think there were, there was a couple of inconsistencies in some of the project titles that we cleaned up related to old Clifton Road corridor improvements. And so there were some minor changes from work study to tonight's version on the tip.
Greg, go ahead, Councilmember Ashby.
I just have a question. We added the Lippert Street Improvements and I understand why. But I want to, it's my understanding that the Lippert Street Improvements being on this tip will not really impact our impact fees.
That is correct, although the impact fee study has not been finished, but Lippert is not currently proposed as a project that is going to be the basis for an impact fee.
I just wanted to clarify that because we have had discussions and have indicated we were going to bring all of the projects forward on the impact fee evaluation. I don't think this one will influence that dollar amount much.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
May I make a motion?
Certainly, we can continue the discussion afterwards if need be. Go ahead.
I move to adopt an ordinance revising the city's comprehensive plan as presented.
Second.
Got a second by Councilmember Deener, main motion by Councilmember Lucarelli. Is there further discussion or questions? Hearing none, you'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance revising the city's comprehensive plan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We're on to item B, Adoption of Resolution Establishing Port Orchard Cares: A Small Business Relief Grant Program. Mr. Crocker?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Both items tonight, 7B and 7C are coming out of the CARES Act. 7B is a first step in which is a resolution to establish the Port Orchard Cares Small Business Relief Grant Program itself. It establishes the amount of funds that we are going to use from the CARES Act funding of $102,000, $100,000 of which will be for the businesses themselves to apply for the grants with $2,000, up to $2,000 for the administrative costs of administering the program. Now, we've been working really hard all day on both these documents with KITA. And the resolution has been shared with the council, with the redlined, with some minor changes this afternoon. So, I just want to circle back real quickly to make sure that the council is voting on the correct resolution tonight. So, Mayor, can I share my screen with the council?
Certainly, and a red line of this document was also sent out yesterday that correct, the version that you have in your packet speaks to a first come, first served. And we modified that yesterday and it was sent, it needed to be an email to you yesterday. And Noah was probably going to bring up the version, the redline version that was sent to you yesterday, but we're prepared to move forward with either, in either direction.
And there were actually a few minor modifications that were made to it in response to comments from KITA today. So, the version that was circulated, I believe this afternoon, and/or the version that he's about to show you via his screen is the final version that we would like to sub into the packet with council's approval for potential adoption.
And Mayor, if you're the host, I will need you to allow me to.
Brandon Brandi is, they've taken that responsibility.
Double check, I didn't miss it, so I just bring him, make him the host. There you go.
Great, thank you, Brandon. So hopefully the whole council can see my screen now here. This is again for the establishment of the program. I'm going to zoom out just a little bit as I scroll through here. So, you can see the first two pages of the resolution have not changed. The only modifications to the resolution are a correction here. We identified the wrong name in there. We wanted to put the maximum amount up there, $5,000 per grant. We had the request from KITA to add in full-time equivalent employees as a definition for the criteria for the funding. Additionally, we wanted a link to help clearly identify those businesses that are eligible and ineligible under the criteria for the grant funding. And lastly, we talked about having the payment and or reimbursement for this period of six months, April through September. So again, those are the minor things. Again, you guys already have seen this in the earlier draft version. This is just simply a modification of elimination of a bullet to combine the above, as well as the, on a first come, first served basis, has been eliminated from this current version that you're voting on tonight. With that, can I continue forward, Charlie? Yeah, I just want to share with the council the redline version that we are working from, that they would be voted, that I'm asking them to vote on tonight. The only changes are identified and read and they have seen them all except for this payment and a reimbursement for the six-month period and the equivalent and this link in the document.
Senator Claussen?
Yeah, Mayor, can you maybe just summarize the reason for the change?
Back in, you know, we've been in negotiations with KITA and just declare, more than anything, clarification, like the evidence of a lease and a, or a declaration from landlord seemed redundant and either or, we were trying to streamline this, make it as, you know, as simple as we can, giving the necessary documents to satisfy commerce, yet not making this overly burdensome. And earlier today, I also sent out the draft application to the council. But most of these were just clarifying language, like KITA wanted to, you know, make sure that, you know, full-time equivalent employees, which is a recognized definition. And then this link to SBA was just so that somebody could just click on the link and look, and really it's any for-profit business qualifies, real estate investment, speculative ventures, nonprofits are the ones that are excluded. Those are really the only exclusions, it's SBA's definition of a for-profit business. So, it was more clarifying language with, with, with KITA and their staff so that when we hit the ground, there isn't any confusion at all what it is we're administering, they're administering for us.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one point?
Yes.
So, we've been working fast on this and the version that was included in your packet that included the on a first come, first served basis language was my draft. Programs of this nature across the state are taking a variety of approaches. Some are first come, first served and some are not. You'll notice due to one of the typos above that I reused a program that I've written for City of Pacific with modifications specific to yours. So, I left that language in there and it went into the packet before the mayor had an opportunity to look at it. And so, once he looked at it, he determined that the approach that he wanted to propose for the council to look at was not the first come, first served, it was the other form of program that other jurisdictions are using as well. So, that is in part my mistake as well.
Okay, Councilmember Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution establishing the Port Orchard Cares Small Business Relief Grant Program and authorizing the mayor to implement the program, as noted in the redline version that we've just viewed live on screen.
Second.
So, a motion by Councilmember Deener, a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Further discussion of this document, Councilmember Ashby?
Yes, I have a couple of things I wanted to talk about. One of the things that I would like to see, even if it's just a box checked on the application or on the agreement, that the business that is receiving our CARES funding makes a statement they're compliant with the COVID-19 guidance.
And I know it went to you very late and after the start of the Finance Committee that you were on, but that draft application has that and.
I haven't received it in my email and I just double-checked the items, the four items that were attached to the one email I got and the redline version was not.
Separate email just ahead of that, so, a few minutes before five. And I will resend it, but it is on that application. I'll be happy to send it to you again.
And then the other thing that I wanted to talk about, and I don't, I don't mean to get in the weeds and I don't mean to complicate this process, but I just want to relay a personal story in that yesterday I went to the nail salon and had a manicure, okay? Now, when I walked into this nail salon, I had to sign a list, I had to give them my phone number, they took my temperature and I had to wash my hands. And then they allowed me to enter the building. So, this business was doing everything they could to comply with COVID-19. And this business, all of the people that work there, English is not their first language. And I'm wondering how we're going to reach those types of businesses. I'm, you know, I don't know how much they, how much they're engaged on social media or in the newspaper. I'm just wondering how we're going to reach those people and can we give them any assistance? As you, I think it was Matt who had said, he who can, you know, fill out the application first, and in this case, how are we subjective? I just, there's just elements of our business population out there that I want to make sure we recognize.
Okay, and I just resent that application in case something happened to it in the, in the world out there. And we're going to get the word out through the chamber, POPSA, the city's website, KITA's website, KITA, we've already scheduled the date and it escapes me off the, I'll get it here. The county is doing a webinar this Friday and to educate people on our process and our application and answer questions. I was asking that we be included in that webinar, KITA wanted to keep them distinctly different. So, we're doing our own special training for this process and to answer questions with KITA on July 24th. And any of you are welcome to attend that, I plan to attend it. And I've got a Zoom link for it already. And it'll be on KITA's website as soon as, you know, you guys approve a contract. We haven't, they haven't put anything out there yet because this isn't live. And I've already written a press release with the help of our publication, information officer. So, I'm going to do the best I can to get this information out to everybody I can and through those channels that I've just mentioned. And if you've got other ideas, I'm happy to, to work those too. So, Councilmember Kuchardi?
Yeah, I might be missing it, but if this is not first come, first served, what's the deadline for this application? What's the time window from when it opens and closes? So, I didn't see it on the application.
In our, our process that I've talked to with John Powers, the county has three tranches of this funding. I can't remember the dollar amounts, there's bigger buckets for the two, from the first two tranches. The first is July 21st and this business is only in Kitsap County. The second is August 4th, business is only in Kitsap County. And August 11th is the bucket that's first come, first served, that's the businesses in the four cities and it's $130,000. And our application will go live on August 3rd, Monday, August 3rd, close that Friday of August 7th. And then they will start gathering those packets. I plan to not have them start their review process until after the 11th so that hopefully some of the applicants we got, got funded from the county's program and will be eliminated from our pool. And then Matt Murphy and the KITA staff, John Powers, and I think it's Kathy Kokas, well, the three of them will review these and give us a prioritized list of up to 30 applicants that for then Noah and I to review, to one last look to make sure they meet the criteria. And then we have to enter into contracts directly with those businesses and gather documentation with the help of KITA.
I just didn't see that, that timeline on the application, should that be added to that, just so people know?
That draft application when we, it's still a draft application, that was just all decided today.
Okay.
Those timelines, it's, this has really been, we've done a lot today on this thing.
Right.
But a good question, it will, it will go on there and it'll go on the website. But yeah, we just decided that decision today. Other questions? Councilmember Deener? You're still muted.
All right, every now and then my spacebar doesn't work like it should. So, I see in the application that there is the minority women and vet-owned checkboxes. Are those going to be given any sort of preference or a limited number of slots? Has that been discussed?
We've, I wouldn't say they're going to get a bucket of slots, but it is a criteria that, and I'm, I'm really trying to stay out of the picking applicants. You know, I don't see an upside in me interjecting myself in that. But it is, this application, other than those green circles, are this the same application that the county's using? We've tried, really tried, other than there's this first come, first served, we've mirrored this after what Kitsap County is doing.
Is there, is there a reason to include those criteria then?
I think so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we can talk about that offline, that's something that I've actually researched and we cannot.
Okay, well, that's a good, 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 good to know and we'll gladly remove that from the application. You might want to, if you could, Charlie, email that to me and John Powers, Noah, what your, your legal opinion on that is.
Thank you.
Will do.
And Kathy Kokas, she's the one that's actually doing the work on the application. Other questions? I just want to share a story. So, Friday I was on the KITA board meeting, so I really, this is a big deal, how much money, we've got $430,000 in CARES money and you're putting 23% of it into this, which I think is huge and the right thing to do. And I was on the KITA board meeting Friday and I've been pushing our neighbor across Sinclair inlet to join me in this process and they've been dragging their feet. And the mayor, when I talked about our program, said, told KITA, the KITA board, I'll match Port Orchard at $100,000 on Friday morning. And, and I asked how much CARES money that, that city got and it's $1.2 million. And when that was said, I said, that's not a match. And so, anyway, well, the mayor said he would have to talk to his city council and I know that Noah got contacted by their finance director asking for all the documents from our program and indicating that they were going to do 250,000, which is an appropriate number, I think, for the city of Bremerton. So, so we were out, I guess, leading this a little bit and I'm proud that we are. So, with that, if there aren't any more questions, there's a motion on the floor to adopt a resolution establishing Port Orchard Cares: A Small Business Relief Grant Program. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes, thank you. We're on to item C, which is tied directly to this prior action. It's approval in our agreement with the South, with the Kitsap Economic Development Alliance, KITA, for the administration of Port Orchard Cares: A Small Business Relief Grant, Relief Grant Program. Mr. Crocker, I think you're going to share your screen again and bring up another redline document.
Sure, we can do it again. So, the first resolution established the program and in that resolution is specified and clarified that internally, we do not have the staffing resources to administer this program. And that's why we wanted to partner with another entity to provide the administration of the program and also partner with whether, the other entities in the county. So, this, what we are bringing forward now is the actual agreement that we're requesting that the council authorize the mayor to execute between the Kitsap Economic Development Alliance for the administration of the program. And the highlights are that in total, we are allocating $102,000 of Port Orchard's CARES funding to the program with $2,000 allocated for the administration costs and $100,000, up to $200,000 for the grantees. Again, as we talked before, we've been working back and forth with KITA all day on these documents. So, I'm going to share the current redline version, although we do have a clean version that has taken out the comments and is, is really cleaned up. But I do want to make sure that council is, you know, aware of the changes that we made, although they are minor in the overall scheme of the program and the contract. So, I share my screen again. Yes, this is it, okay? Sorry, sorry for all the zooming effects. Again, this is a, the contract between KITA and the city. I'm just going to briefly walk through the redline version, the change that we made. KITA had first requested a little clarification that we would notify them so that they knew to invoice us after they approved the grant and sent that forward in the program. We thought that was appropriate so that we put in there that the city will notify KITA when the grant recipient has received approval for the funding so that KITA can invoice us. They're going to charge us $100 per application and in total, that's about 20 applications and that's how we get to $2,000. So, they wanted some mechanisms, some reporting back to communicate with them. That seems again fair and appropriate. We attached Exhibit C here, which is the agreement between the city of Port Orchard and the Department of Commerce, which the council approved at a previous meeting. So, we just want to make sure that that was a part of this overall conversation and discussion to ensure that KITA was a participant in ensuring that the businesses were compliant with the Department of Commerce and the CARES Act. Exhibit B, this was again, was a question from them at the time we provided this, they hadn't had the Exhibit B. Exhibit B is the contract between the city and the businesses. So, we have since provided that. Again, minor, minor questions throughout the document that we have already resolved that did not change the overall document that we have here. Again, they requested that the records will probably be digital, electronic, email. So, we scratched written records and just wanted records. And then we're to Exhibit A, again, we had just previously talked about that in, in the establishment of our program. We had to define equivalent, 15 full-time equivalent employees, again, the link to the small business administration for eligible businesses, the payment and reimbursement language that we previously discussed. And that is it. So, as you can see, the changes in the redline version are, are minor. Again, I want to make sure that the council is aware of the contract redline version that has changed since its original posting. And now we are prepared to move forward with the clean, clean version.
You can see by all the comments, KITA is, which we want them to be very detail oriented in this and asking a lot of really good questions of us to make sure that we got these agreements. So, it's important because we're funding this and getting reimbursed and we don't want to get a situation where we can't get reimbursed. So, we're, you know, we're very hard to ensure that the documentation was all correct. So, Councilmember Ashby?
My question is simply, this $2,000 that we're paying KITA, I think is minimal for the work they're going to be doing for us. And I just wanted to be clear that that's only for approved applications. It is not for every application they handle.
I think it's for the, $2,000 is for the, is for the program. I don't believe it's by the application, it works out to $100, $100 per application.
For approved applications, for awarded applications.
I believe that's correct, Beck, because in this, in the clarity that they requested was that once we approved an application, then we would notify them so that they could invoice us.
Okay, so they're not going to invoice us if they have 150 applications that they, that they've had to manage or handle or evaluate?
No, and we put in a cap of the 2,000 total, so.
Okay.
Speaker Kuchardi?
Mayor, I would move to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between the city and the Kitsap Economic Development Alliance for the administration of the Port Orchard Cares Small Business Relief Grant Program.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Kuchardi and a second by Councilmember Claussen. Are any further questions, comments, concerns?
I would make one other comment. And again, this is, the council is a part of the program, so I don't see this as being a concern. But because it is a reimbursement-based program for the city, meaning we would have to put out the funds and then receive reimbursement through Department of Commerce, I will be coming back to the council requesting a budget adjustment to provide for the, the funds here. But we will do that in a future budget request that is holistic as we look at all the COVID funding. But I do want to make sure that the council was aware that this would be general funded until we received our reimbursements from Department of Commerce.
Thank you for that clarification, Noah. And Noah, I believe in his staff report, has a, an spreadsheet showing all of our, how we've proposed to spend all of the COVID dollars, just to keep you guys in the loops. We've got, we've got all of the dollars identified and so we'll talk about that a little later in the evening. So, with that, we have a motion on the floor, any other comments or questions?
I just wanted to thank all of you for your sense of urgency on this and trying to streamline the process. and trying to streamline the process and get this onto the street as quickly as possible. Thank you.
All right, we worked very hard on it. In particular, Charlie and Noah, Rebecca and the staff over at Kita put many hours into this today. So I, yes, I wish to recognize them too. So with that, you'll be voting on approval of an agreement with the Kitsap Economic Development Alliance for the administration of the Port Orchard CARES Small Business Relief Grant Program. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the contract is approved or the agreement is approved. We are on to item 7D, which is the approval and ratification of the mayor's extension of a proclamation of local emergency pursuant to RCW 30.52.070. Ms. Archer, I think you're going to take this and educate us on why I'm doing this.
Yes, this is an administrative task. As you recall, on March 16th, the mayor issued his initial proclamation of local emergency due to the spread of the coronavirus. That proclamation expired in late June. At that time, the mayor extended. The reason for a cap was we hadn't anticipated this would continue thus far. So we went ahead and extended for an additional 90 days. The council ratified the earlier proclamation by action. And this, by this motion, the council would be again ratifying the extension of the proclamation of local emergency. The proclamation is included in your packet at page 109. The proclamation's import and the extension of it are focused almost exclusively on the procurement of items and the circumvention of the bidding rules during an emergency due to the fact that procurement needs to happen in an expedited fashion due to an emergency. Under your municipal code, the mayor has additional authorities in the local emergency, but the import of the proclamation and the import of your ratification focuses almost exclusively on the issue of procurement and ensuring that the city is able to use its tools. I'm happy to answer any questions about this as well.
Just to clarify, the, to date, the only means, the only way I've used that emergency power for procurement has have been COVID dollars for workspace modifications. We've ordered furnishings that are, that they're on their way. And because of the deadlines associated with the CARES Act funding, there's long lead times on this stuff right now and we needed to expedite those purchases.
And to feedback on that, all of those purchases would still come to the council for ratification at an upcoming meeting. So nothing's happening, you know, behind closed doors. It'll still be transparent. It's just the order in which things happen due to the emergency.
Council member Rosa Pepe?
Just a quick question. I'm just a little confused on the dates. I understand the first date in the June 16th date. And it looked like it was extended on June 16th for 90 days. So I was just kind of curious of why we're taking the action on July 14th for another extension.
You're, you're, you're ratifying the extension that occurred, that started on June 16th. Yeah. So in order to ratify, we need to get it to the council as soon as reasonably practicable.
Got it. Thank you.
But I made an emergency order and then we bring it to a council meeting, which is that, that's this action now for you to ratify or tell me no.
So mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move to approve of and ratify the mayor's extension of the proclamation of local emergency dated 16th June 2020 pursuant to RCW 38.52.070.
Second.
Motion by council member Rosa Pepe, a second by council member Deener. Any further discussion of the ratification of the emergency order? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? You know, the order has been ratified. We got two sets of minutes to approve and then we'll get into some discussion items. So first is the approval of the June 16th council work study meeting minutes. And is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes.
Okay. And that was a second by a motion by councilor Clausen, a second by council member Chang. And I believe I'll have abstentions by council member Chardy and council member Deener on this item. Any corrections or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the June 16th minutes, say aye. Any opposed? And two abstentions. We are on to the second item, which second minute, set of minutes is the approval of the June 23rd council meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the council minutes of June 23rd.
Second.
A motion by council member Clausen, a second by council member Luca Reli, and I will have an abstention, I believe, by council member Deener. Any corrections or questions on the June 23rd meeting minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the June 23rd minutes, say aye. Opposed? And one abstention. Okay, we have two discussion items tonight. And the first is budget related by Mr. Crocker. If you want to share your screen, I would imagine, and take over this discussion. Looks like we lost Noah. No, there he is. He just moved on the screen. I don't know where you, how that happened.
Yeah, so this is the first of a few conversations we're going to have this month regarding budget. We're really starting to kick it off. And so we wanted to, again, let me back up. Prior to COVID, we had plans to have a full council retreat and talk about the calendar and the goals and the upcoming schedule. COVID hit, we were unable to have a retreat. So we've restrategized our plan. And what we're going to do is we're going to talk budget with the council at the next three council meetings start tonight, the 21st study session as well as the 28th. That'll give us enough time to start working into the budget session as well as taking comments from council direction and goals and building that into the budget process. So tonight is our first step into the budget process. And what I wanted to share with council tonight to keep it light after a long agenda was just the budget calendar for the upcoming year. And so council should be familiar with some of the stuff we've been working towards already. So I'm just going to kind of walk through the months here. This last month in June, staff has worked hard with different committees to work on updating the city comprehensive plan. Nick Bond has presented that tonight as well as the last couple of meetings, working very hard to update the city comprehensive plan, transportation impact fees. And I'm now presenting the budget calendar for the upcoming year. In July this month, we intend on updating our financial policies. I will bring some thoughts and conversations to the next couple of meetings and get direction. We had a brief conversation with the finance committee today on some of our current financial policies and has some directions. That was very helpful. We intend on having next week's study session, again, talking about goals, financial policies, and working to get some more feedback from the full council going forward. After we get this full council's direction and goals, the mayor and I will sit down and will develop the plan and the message for department heads. We'll then continue to update our budget, provide a six-month report for the year for the council. Hopefully everyone received our June report. But I'd also like to follow that up with a mid-year report, a six-month report, if you will. How are we doing three quarters through our biennial budget? Or, you know, halfway through our 2020 fiscal year? We'll be talking water, sewage, rates and charges next study session. Next week, Mr. Dorsey, Ms. Brown will be presenting on that. We are also taking consideration this month and starting to do our projections on our salaries and benefits. So that's kind of the work we got mapped out for this month of July. Then starting next month, we will start to work with directors. We'll provide them with instructions for the proposed 21, 22 biennial budget. We'll prepare our revenue estimates and our projections for any fund balance for this year as well as the biennial period. And then we'll set the schedule for when we intend on meeting one-on-one with department heads to review their budget submittals. We move into September, we'll sit down. We will meet with the department directors on their budget submittals. The mayor will work to review and scrub those numbers and get better information. By the end of September, our intent is to have a, a complete preliminary budget publication ready to go to council, which will take us into October, where the mayor will write his budget and will provide to the council as well as the public. We'll begin here, holding our revenue sources hearings. We'll meet with the finance committee to review the entire preliminary budget as well as provide it to council at study session. Kind of really evaluating our revenue sources, our expenditure plans, following all our proper notifications as well. And then the important bullet point here that we always do in October is our all-day council special meeting where the council members get to sit and we bring each department up to present their budget and ask questions and make modifications. At the conclusion of October, we want to have the final council budget flushed out, cleaned and ready to go for November. So that November is really about presenting at the various meetings, completing our revenue process and our property tax hearings and having that opportunity to talk with the public about our proposed budget. And then hopefully we will adopt in the month of November. So I'm just going to pause there and see if any of the council members have any questions on our current calendar schedule or need some clarification.
I'd just like to share from the finance committee earlier today. They gave some direction to Noah and I as far as some targets for our reserve balances. We talked, they talked about the need to continue our communication that we're doing and continue that path of better communication in the city, making that a priority. And street preservation and maintenance should be a priority going into that budget. And we'll bring all of that to a work study for all of you to weigh in on. But that was some of the directed direction that Noah and I got from finance committee. Was there another item?
Yeah, the other item we wanted to bring back to next week to let the full council discuss is that in every budget document we put out, the council puts forward their goals. And so I want the full council to review the goals you set forth in the last biennial period and think about what goals you want to set out there publicly in the next biennial period and give you guys a chance to really kind of flush those out at this next study session.
Or Clausen?
Yes, I would just like to add, the finance committee meeting, we talked about establishing goals for our reserves. But we also talked about kind of new establishing reserves and some of our funds beyond just general fund as well as kind of a cash flow reserve. So there's multiple reserves that we'll be talking about as we move forward here. And like I said, the finance committee kind of set some goals and we'll be bringing this forward to the full council of those discussions.
Where are we with the discussion about ecology rules, proposed rules, limitations on TMDLs and potential impacts to ratepayers in the city? Well, everywhere.
At this point, they're unknown, but that is something that could impact our sewer treatment plant and the number of connections that we can have. And we, you know, we're barely over 50% capacity at its current rating. And that could change. There's definitely concern about that. And we're working hard to defend our position on that. And I hope it doesn't, but someday, someday it could. And, but there's nothing in our budget planning for that. And that's really a joint discussion with us and West Sound Utility District because we jointly own that with them.
Is there a next milestone date that we should kind of be aware of?
No, not that I'm aware of. Mr. Dorsey, do you know of any dates out there or?
No.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a known problem that, and a process that we're working through.
At the last sewer advisory committee, we had a long, long discussion about all of those issues related to ecology and how it relates to the plant. And it's a big unknown at this point. So the staff over there is certainly aware of the issue. They're working the issue with them. They're looking at potential options for us, but it is, as the mayor said, it's kind of a unknown target right now.
And yeah, go ahead, Mark.
The city of Tacoma really is taking the lead on this along with the Washington State Associations. And to me, this feels a lot like ADA where eventually it's going to be defined by lawsuits. Because I don't see this thing just kind of going away without a fight.
Yeah, I agree.
Council member Luca Reli, do you have a question?
I just was going to ask Noah if he would please send the budget timeline by email, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions about this budget timeline for Noah? Noah, since you have the floor, do you want to throw up your COVID slide?
Yeah, we'll just keep on going here. So, and I will mention this, so what the mayor and I have talked about as far as working into our budget assumptions on the revenue front is, you know, we've always been fairly conservative in our approach in our revenue and expense budgeting. We're going to continue with that philosophy with a pretty flat revenue approach for our next biennial period. And again, the big driver of the flat growth is due to COVID. Lots of unknowns there. I know lots of entities that are cutting their budgets significantly on the revenue side and they're having to experience big cuts in this current fiscal period. We are actually doing quite well if you, if you kind of followed the monthly report that we're doing well for our financials at this point, six months through the year. So we're going to continue that. But we are going to take a flatter approach to revenues next biennium. So with that, I want to share with you our COVID detail. Well, the CARES Act has provided us 400 and?
31,000, I believe it is.
$431,000 of funds available for COVID activities and COVID related. So over the last few months, we've worked to identify how we would spend these COVID proceeds. We put forth, maybe I'll kind of describe the table a little bit. On the far left column, you have your description of your revenues. Again, the Department of Commerce grants for 431,000. Our expenditures, how we are tracking these in our new software system. These first two are employees related. The 30 mean supplies for immune services and then I'll come back to the COVID laser. But what I really want to do was break down some of these supplies and services, which are the larger ticket items. And so you see in here, we budgeted $175,000 for COVID related supplies. And what that means is that means social safety equipment or supplies, masks, PE sanitizers. We are building, as the mayor discussed already, we're building social distance workspaces at the public workshop. We are building social distance workspaces in the finance department, DC department, as well as the police department. And those are some of the more recent purchases that the mayor will follow with emergency action on due to the lag in timing for when we can receive those cubicles. There's a six-month or not, excuse me, a six-week delay due to the demand for the manufacturing of this, this equipment. So these are the budget estimates we have for the different pieces. Lastly, council chambers, public social distancing equipment. We have been working to, the mayor has been working to come up with a configuration that works for the public to have access to the city council chambers. But we can continue to have Zoom and keep everyone distantly safe as well as really engaging in our audio and visual equipment.
The new cameras, we should, we'll be able to live stream a meeting versus our antiquated recording equipment, updated displays. So council chamber will look a little different when next time you, hopefully you get to come back there.
In the last item we have budgeted for is the IT stay-at-home, stay-safe teleworking equipment. That's the monitors, that's the docking stations and laptops for employees, trying to keep employees teleworking but productive in both IT on the hardware side as well as the software side. So we budgeted $175,000 for those supplies. A year to date, we've spent $43,000. A year to date, we've spent forty three thousand dollars with the majority of that coming from the IT equipment, the laptops and surfaces. But you can see we've all spent about fifteen thousand dollars on just basic supplies, sanitizer, masks, PE. And you can, you'll continue to see us spend on that particular category each month as invoices rolling in. We need to continue to acquire new safety supplies. Before I move on, are there any questions on any of the breakdown of the supplies? Not seen any? Okay, then I will continue. So the, in the services category, tonight, the council approved the small business grant program. Again, we budgeted a hundred and two thousand dollars for that, no activity. But that will presumably pick up here in the next two months. And then lastly, we budgeted. Services for legal advertising, publishing, training and subscriptions. Right now with all the, we've talked about this last couple of years, but the publishing costs have really increased for COVID. Especially with not having all our papers active. So we had to have a little budget in there for that. What you'll find is that we've have fully allocated the full grant of Department of Commerce according to these budget estimates. Now we will see how these have, for the most part, all the supplies have been ordered and are kind of on target. And the one hundred and two small business grant program, again, we hope that really becomes a huge success and we can allocate all those funds out. And so we can fully expend the full four hundred and thirty one thousand dollars.
This is for Noah. Just an effort to make you guys be transparent, make you guys aware of what we're doing. And these dollars had very tight controls and how we could spend them. Very specific to COVID response and making workspaces and our work environment and promoting teleworking activities. Councilor Deener, was that your hand raising?
Yeah, that was my hand trying to raise. In, in general, are we moving away from desktop? Towers and, and moving towards laptops for employees?
Surfaces, just like you have. We actually this in a, and a little, the newer version, the surface laptops. And you know, teleworking doesn't work for a, a police officer, a public works employee. You know, there's some staff in engineering in the public works department, DCD, finance department. You know, the clerk's office, working a bit remotely. Well, I would say we have about between twenty and twenty five percent of our employees on, on, on an average day, teleworking here at the city hall. So we're only having the people here that need to be here. And we're working towards as we bring people back that we have works, workspaces where they can sit in their workspace and not have to wear a mask. That they do have a workspace that's their own and, you know, and, and comfortable and safe there.
Yeah, and I think what we're starting to identify is that with the uptick in cases in COVID, possible counties and entities scaling back to phase one. This is actually really good that we have gone forward and purchased this teleworking equipment and almost created these kind of at home stations and at work stations. So you're simply bringing in your laptop docking in, you're set to go. If you need to do it at your home, take it home, docking at home. It's for those employees that are doing, it's working really well right now. And so we kind of had this nice time to test it out, make sure we got the right equipment, got the right software, got the right security measures in place. And, and so far it's working in anticipation of the next few months in my mind. If this COVID does force us to phase down a little bit and have more people remotely working.
And, and credit to Debbie Hunt, our HR person, she's helped us with telework agreements. So that we can enter an agreement with an employee, we're able to track the work and the work product that they're doing. So, you know, our managers are doing a good job. You know, keeping an eye on our employees, even though they're not necessarily here. And managing the, the work product and ensuring that they're, that are producing just as well, if not better at home. Versus here at the office.
Yeah, and one correction there, Mayor, that was Debbie Lund.
I'm sorry, Debbie Hunt was the former coordinator. Lots of Debbie's.
There would be one other item I did want to point out was the COVID laser fish expenditure. When we looked at and went through the commerce training, they had mentioned remote document management software systems were eligible. It's a good fit for laser fish to allow us again to better work remotely. Both teleworking, but also providing documents to the public, to the council. So we are pursuing that as an avenue in the budget as well.
And that's something we've talked about for into last year. We never did fund it, we never did implement it, and then COVID came along and pushed us over the edge. And it's not, you know, I'm thankful that, you know, at our last retreat, you guys all just made the commitment to go paperless. And we got you your devices. It was just dumb luck that enabled us to do what we're doing here tonight. Because you guys were equipped to be able to, to conduct our meeting this way. So it's brilliant, actually.
Love it when a plan comes together.
Yes, even though I didn't have a plan at the moment. So with that, is that the end of your presentation, Noah?
Unless there's any other questions for me.
Okay, questions for Noah? We're going to go on to our police chief, who's going to give us a little update. Matt's been with us now, Chief Brown's been with us a little over a year now, a year and a few days. And I thought it would be appropriate, Cindy and I saw some of this presentation at Rotary today. Bet it's similar, but it's going to, can I give us a, a check in on where the police department's at one year after he started?
Yeah, I, I chose not to do the presentation. I think I'll just share with you some of the highlights that we've had over the last year. I, I recognize that your time is valuable and we've run a little bit long. So just kind of give you a synopsis of the year. So we did start with one on ones where we sat down with every employee. And I think the two major things that came out of that are, are three major things. We're resetting our mission, vision and values. And I think you've, you've all heard me talk about this a lot, but it's important that we have a shared mission when we walk out the door. That's the, the basis of it is, you know, we're protecting lives, rights and property in this community. But, but the other thing is that we're working to reduce crime and reducing the fear of crime. One of the things that I've talked about with some of these other groups is that we can work really, really hard and, and go out and stop criminal activity. Let's say down on the waterfront, where we don't have a crime for months. But if people are still afraid to go down there because of perception, then we really haven't done our job. So as part of our mission, where we're talking to the community and sharing our successes, that helps us to reduce that fear of crime. We've also in our mission, make sure that we're transparent, accountable and engaged with the community. I think we've done a significant amount of outreach compared to years past. We are meeting on a monthly basis with the NAACP and PACT, PACT is Police and Community Together, which is a group that was formed in Bremerton with the Mount Zion Baptist Church originally. And I think that you can see that result of our, of our outreach in the protest movement in Kitsap and how it's different from other areas. Most significantly, when, when you saw the Occupy Bremerton Police Department protest. Where you had the chief standing there with four black ministers to back him. And, and the fact that the police departments and the sheriff's office in this county do a good job working with our communities. And that's again, part of our mission. Our vision, of course, is to be amongst the best in this, in, in our profession. And I think we're working our way towards that. That's also significant, because if we say we're going to be the best, that means that at a certain point we stop working. And I, I don't agree with that, but we can be amongst the best. And we've got plans to continue working on that in twenty one and twenty two that I'll share with you in just a minute. And then finally, our values. You know, we, we did a heavy lift in completely redoing our policy manual, but we wanted to make sure that staff recognized. We aren't a policy driven agency. We need to have those policies so that we have a framework for our agency. But with the development of, of shared values of service, honor and integrity. As long as their actions fall within those three concepts, they're, they're going to make the right decision every time. And what we ask our staff is before they make an act or make a choice or they act, is this being done in service to my community and to my partners? Do I maintain my honor and do I maintain my integrity? And the reality is, if you can answer yes to all of those and you're outside of policy, the problem's policy, not your choice. And we can work with that. So as I said, we were in, we introduced Lexipol, which is a policy delivery system that's digital. It's all online, officers concede on their phones. We can update it as regularly as we need to. One of the things that's very helpful for us and, and as members of command staff is this company provides us with templates that we can then customize to our needs and to our region. But because they're, they have a lot of, of legal staff, they can go through all the case law updates. And I don't have to worry about that, which is where you can end up with agencies that have very, very outdated policy. You know, we, we just updated some language on a half dozen policies the other day that I probably wouldn't have caught because it came out of a, a court decision that just made it past me. But that's why it's important that we have these outside resources. Another major accomplishment that we did this year is we clarified a lot of the roles in our police department. There were some tasks that were being done by commission personnel that were very clearly administrative tasks or tasks that could be done by our records unit and should have been done. So we sat down as command staff and with some of the employees that were doing these things and figured out how to be much more efficient with that. And getting the things done where they needed to. And so instead of paying somebody sergeant's wages to, you know, audit citations, I can have a, a record specialist do that. And again, that gets our cops back out doing what they need to do and have our supervisors be out mentoring and empowering our officers out in the field. Also in our administrative services division, we've gone paperless with our case management and our case files. So when I first arrived, we were the only agency in the county that was still operating on a paper basis for their case files. Officers would go in the field and then have to come back to the office. They would write their report into the digital system, print it out, sign it, hand it to their sergeant who would sign it. And then that would go back to record staff and record staff would scan it back in and then put it into the system and create a paper file. Lots of time doing things multiple, or lots of scenarios where people are, were doing the same action multiple times. And even the act of walking up and down a hall to create a case file, that's time that could be used doing something more efficiently. So we were able to work with the county and as of June first, we've gone completely paperless. Officers can stay in the field, write their reports for, in, in a safe location, they can submit it. There's a workflow that's all digital so that the sergeants can, can maintain that. And it reduces the time that administrative staff need to be spending on that. And that allows us to work on other projects that still have a three to five year completion time. As Ms. Lucarelli can attest, we have redone our, our event planning. We are using the incident command model, which is very similar to what FIRE uses on their, on all of their incidents. And I think that allows us to expand and contract our response for public safety much more efficiently and much better. We had another large incident in town with a bandito's funeral where we ended up having. Five different agencies that, that were involved in a significant amount of resources. And we were able to manage that because we've been working on how to, to plan for these incidents a little bit better. Once COVID goes away and we start having events in town, you'll see that demonstrated a little bit more. I also want to thank you guys again for the fourth sergeant position we promoted to people today. So our fourth sergeant will be starting on the nineteenth. And the second sergeant will be taking Sergeant Glance's position on the ninth of August. He is leaving the agency after about twenty five years and moving to Washugle to take a position down there. So again, I appreciate the fact that the council was willing to work with us and make that happen. That's, that's a significant development for our agency and a positive development. As you all are aware as, as well, we have changed our schedule so that we're on demand based staffing instead of shifts. That, you know, we, we were able to look statistically and say, where, where do we need more officers? And instead of saying, well, everybody will start at eight or four or nine, we now can field people up to a staff of six without causing any extra overtime. The expectation is that as we need to cover shifts, because we have a cascading schedule, we won't need to cover a full eight to ten hour shift. We can cover two to three hours at the beginning or the end of a shift and, and help with that a little bit as well. And the dedicated training days that it provides, we've already used the first one. We weren't able to get a training cadre in just because of COVID. But instead, we've been able to do some emphasis patrols or have people go down and just be a presence in, in our parks and down on the waterfront. We've increased our training like we discussed at the council retreat in January. We have now delivered, I want to say it's somewhere around thirty hours of just online training. And we anticipate probably another, depending on how COVID goes, we can probably deliver another thirty plus hours in person training by the end of the year. And that's going to be a threefold increase over what we were doing previously. And like I said as well, we've increased our community outreach with the NAACP, PACT and some of the other groups. So for next year, we're going to work on accreditation, accreditation through the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs. We are the only agency in the entire county that is not accredited. I served as the accreditation manager in Polsbo when I was there. That's a, it's a fairly elite group in this state. Only about twenty percent of the agencies are accredited and that means that we are doing the absolute best practice for our entire industry in the state. We actually started two weeks ago on the project, we're already ten percent done. There are some things that we may come to council with different ordinances or different updates. But we believe that we can get it into our, our budget projections for next year without significant cost. That, that, that's also, I think, something that, that council can, can hang their hat on because you guys are, are providing us the ability to do that. I'm working with the mayor and a number of, of individuals throughout the county. I'm sorry, throughout the city to develop a community advisory board for the police department. The goal for that board is to help us with a strategic plan so that the community can guide where we're going over the next three years. Cause I can, I can sit here and say, I know where I think I would like to take it. But that doesn't take into account the people in the community, especially right now, that want to have a voice in what their police department does and does not do. And finally, we are working with South Kitsap Fire to have our own navigator. I, I would suspect that if we can make it work, it's going to be a, a split halfway. And there's a, a program that's being started kind of across the country where FIRE also has these navigators. So for their high use individuals, they are able to provide that navigation service and, and reduce the strain on, on first responders and emergency services. So that's kind of the update for right now. We also intend to be working with HR on some lateral hires, at least one by the end of the year. Yes, sir.
Chief, just since you brought up that you had met with the superintendent. Have you had any discussion about the SRO and how, how that may be going with the reduction in school hours? Or are things just progressing normally right now?
We have had some discussions. I, I, I think I probably should let him speak to that. Nothing has changed right now. We're in the middle of developing the contract for the school here. But they, they still need to figure out what that's going to look like.
We, we currently don't have a contract and we're in negotiations with them on, in regards to that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Deener?
Could I, or could we get the presentation that was given to the Rotary Club? That'd be great. Okay, and then I just wanted to say that I don't understand all that you have to face and all that you go through. But I sure love what I'm hearing about and reading about as well. And that you're looking at sort of institutional changes and improvements and hunting down those efficiencies and knocking those out. And certainly the navigator program is really important and also putting together the community advisory board. And to that effect, I'm getting a few emails about a race equity task force. And I don't know if we've, if we've thought about that or it seems like it got some traction with Bremerton. But I don't know where, where else it's gotten any traction or if it's something that's on parallel with this perhaps community advisory board.
It's, it's a different animal and I've got a, something to speak to that in my mayor's report.
Okay, but thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
So other questions for the chief before we move into our committee reports? Okay, thank you, chief. And you know, if you'd like to share your, if you have anything else to share, you can share it, chief. And if you don't, then maybe I'll let you go. You have anything else for a committee report? Okay, all right, you can hang around and listen to us or dismiss yourself if you'd like. Thank you. So with that. Got council committees, I finance you met tonight?
Yeah, we pretty much discussed most everything that we talked about.
Yeah, we pretty much discussed most everything that we talked about. We did talk a little bit about sales tax receipts and the REIT money. And we're fortunate in that we're kind of keeping our nose above the waterline. So it's not a barn burner, but it's not in the negative category. So that was about it, other than we talked about all the other issues with budget and goals and setting some thresholds for our different reserve accounts.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Clausen. Economic Development Tourism, is that Sean?
Yeah, we met yesterday, really three different discussion items. Number one was the extended foot ferry concept that we had talked about obviously pre-COVID. That was to subsidize foot traffic on the foot ferry between Bremerton and Port Orchard, especially during our festival weekends. Obviously with COVID, those festivals are not occurring. And so basically the consensus of the committee would be to not expand those hours because there's really no, no festivals to support. So that was, that was a pretty easy decision to come to. And then we moved on and Brandy helped provide kind of a lodging tax funding update. And I know Noah had a big role in generating some of the reports about, you know, what was originally approved and then kind of the impacts of COVID on some of these dollars really not being expended. And then kind of the work they're going to be doing between now and our next meeting to really kind of bring the full details together that will ultimately inform the lodging tax committee on how they move forward this fall and kind of the amount of funds that we believe will be available in 2021 and 2022. For that, obviously the hotel industry has been drastically impacted. And so we expect, you know, the collection of those dollars to be much slower than previous years. And so we'll just have to plan accordingly for that. We will have some additional dollars that weren't expended in 2020 that will carry forward, you know, into the next biennium. But we just want to really be able to have a good understanding and a conservative approach on what funds will be available. And then finally, we just kind of, go ahead, John.
Oh, I was just going to add in regards to the foot ferry service and extended hours and to that nature, just so the council is aware, the current contractor that operates that service, their contract expires at the end of this year. And Kitsap Transit is going to assume the operation of that, that service. So January 1, it will be just Kitsap Transit, there won't be anybody to charter with.
Okay, thank you. Then our final discussion point, and it was nice to have the POPSA represented and the chamber represented, we're just kind of a round table discussion on what we're hearing from our business community. Obviously COVID has impacted every single business differently. And so we just wanted to make sure that there's ongoing communication that we're out there that if there's any specific concerns for specific businesses, there is not a one size fits all approach. There's not a one size fits all plan that, that we could put together from the city. And so we just encouraged, you know, our different associations to invite ideas and concepts, you know, from, from our local businesses on, on what we may be able to do to support them, you know, as we move forward. So it was a healthy discussion and we hope to continue to have just kind of strong communication, you know, between all the stakeholders that are being impacted. And that was basically the, the meeting.
Thanks for your report. Utilities, it looks like you meet next week?
We do.
We'll look for your report here at the next council meeting. Sewer advisory isn't until September. Land use is August 3rd. Have you met since our last, your last report?
Yes, we met last week and we had four pretty quick items. The first was the presentation from about a donation policy that the mayor is going to be bringing forward to the rest of us. We'll be seeing that. Then there was a, the presentation on the downtown suburb area plan economic study. I believe that's also been through the Economic Development Committee. So it's been through two committees. Then we talked a little about the multifamily tax exemption areas. There were two of three maps that are being developed that are, that we've, will come back to council. And finally, we got a look at the draft for the Ruby Creek suburb area plan. This is the area on Sydney north of Sedgwick. And it's actually, it's, I was very impressed. It was a very interesting looking neighborhood in the making with a lot of, I guess, mixed use, although in a different way. So that's going, I believe that's going to go through the planning commission and then that will be coming back to the council.
Thank you for your report. And so that donation policy, I've had a number of people approaching the city wanting to donate benches. And every time it seems, it seems sometimes when it comes to art or things people want to donate to us, it always isn't always what we want. And, and council member Ashby more than once has asked me, where's our policy? And so we've had, we've got a program going on the waterfront with the Rotary Club and I'm trying to develop something else for other places in the city. And, but it's going to start with a policy that I'll bring back. So, so, so I'll be prepared to answer that question on where the policy is. So all right, transportation committee. If you have a report or have you met recently?
No, we have not met. And we will be meeting, we regularly meet the fourth Tuesday of the month at 5:00.
Okay. Look forward to your report at the next council meeting. Lodging tax, I don't believe is met and you're probably, you're still wondering what you have for dollars. That's what I'm hearing.
Well, that's, that's true. I would like to thank the Noah and Brandy for putting together a lot of information. I think it'll be a good starting discussion as we try to help out our retail folks and nonprofits trying to get people back to Port Orchard. It's going to be a good year.
Okay. Anything to report on festival chimes and lights?
A meeting is next week.
All right. Outside agencies, Beck, do you have anything?
Um, I'm trying to think what I reported on last time in the KRCC did do their federal transportation awards that may have been, we didn't, City of Port Orchard did not participate. But that process went smoothly. We are again involved with the Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization. And we received a survey today from that organization about putting together a legislative outlook that we will be providing to our legislators, legislators in November and December. And we'll be responding to that. Mr. Dorsey looked it over because it's all transportation related. Other than that, KRCC does not meet again until the first part of September. I think the first Tuesday in September. And so PSRC again has not been actively meeting, or at least the transportation policy board. So that's all I have right now, mayor.
I have two, Public Health Board, that's the gift that just keeps on giving. And I'm the chair of that board. And I shared with you an email earlier today, an email where the governor has extended the, his pause order, that nobody will be advancing in their phases at least until July 28th. And we're hearing that some counties may even be regressing. So, but more to come on that. Housing Kitsap. We finally have got the fur ball unwound that was our financial statements from that disaster. And we are having in the midst of our 2018 audit, which will followed by the 2019 audit. So that's one of the things that HUD and the state auditors have been all over. And I'm also the chair of that agency. So we, by the first week in August, our audit, our financial statement and financial, it's, what is it? Compliance audit? Is that what it is called, Noah? Anyway, it's financial statement audit and accountability audit. That's what it is. And it's supposed to be done the first week in August. And we'll immediately start on the 2019 audit right after that. And we're working on approving a budget for 2020, which is only going to be about six weeks. We went about a year and a half without a budget because we didn't have a financial software. So it's huge, huge, huge improvements. And I, I think we're going to be able to show in this next budget that the agency is actually, while we're not paying on the county's mountain of debt, they're at least keeping their, their nose above the waterline. So, which is a huge improvement from where we've been. Mayor's report, we've got a job posted out there right now. I just want to point that out to you and report because I need to report changes to job positions to you. It was previously a public works office manager position and we've rewritten that job description because that person, 75 to 80% of what they did was procurement. So now it is considered, it's a, Mark, do you know what that title is exactly? But anyway, it's, it's procurement's in the title. We've got about almost 20 applicants. It closes the end of the week. So we're pretty excited about that to get somebody on board for procurement.
It's a procurement specialist.
Procurement specialist. There we go. We got, can I talk about the, the population estimates, Nick? Are those official yet? I think we're changing the sign. So it must be.
Those are official, yes.
Wonderful. So Nick caught in the, the first estimate that our vacancy rate in our Mokley family was off considerably. It had what? 7% vacancy is what it showed. And if you're a landlord or looking or a tenant looking for a place, you know, that's not accurate. So Nick went through an exercise and with commerce and got our number corrected. And so our population this last year went up 2.6% or 380 people to 14,770. We'll be changing the signs. Bremerton was down 330 people. That could be a boat being out when they counted. I don't know. Pauls Bowe was up 370 people or 3.3% and Bean Bridge was up 550 people or 2.2%. And the county as a whole was up 0.7% or 2,100 people. So most of that growth is happening in the county, in the cities. I've had, been having a number of conversations with folks. Got an entire list of all the festivals that normally happen. And all but three festivals for this year have been canceled from including our National Night Out, the Boobash. I've got two though, the Cruisin' Sunday at Christian Life Church and the Mustangs that are holding out that they, they think we're going to get to phase four this summer. And I'm not optimistic that that's going to happen. I really don't want us to take action to stop festivals. But they're, they're confident we're going to get to phase four. And if they need to, they're going to delay their events into September. And we'll just have to wait and see. So the downside to this is, is they can, they continue to send us plans and dates. We spend staff time reviewing that and planning for it from a public work standpoint and a police standpoint. So I'm really kind of pushing these organizations to make some decisions whether or not they're going to hold their events. And I question whether it's realistic that we're going to get to phase four this summer. I'm having a real challenge or not, I am, Nick Mon is having a real challenge with planning commissioner attendance. And by law, our planning commissioners can't be compensated. Nick and I, we started down that path. Maybe if we paid them, they'd come more often. More than one time here recently, we haven't had a quorum. We currently have a board of eight, correct, Nick? Which creates a funny, funny quorum requirements. We have to have five, you know? And so we, what do you, you know, so if we change this to a seven member commission or a nine member commission, you know, maybe we could, our odds would be better on, on getting a quorum. I've been making some personal phone calls to planning commissioner members to talk to them about their, their commitment. And if they're not committed to it, maybe they need to resign from the planning commission. And so is there any, would the council, I guess, be receptive if we wanted to change the makeup of the planning commission? Anybody have any objections to that? And I'm thinking to make it seven, like the council versus eight.
I would support that.
I would too.
Okay. So I might continue to work through that. To councilmember Deener's earlier question, I had a Zoom meeting last week with the Vital Community Committee of the Bremerton Chapter of the NAACP. I know talking, from talking to our police chief, another jurisdictions, council member went there with their police chief and the police talked about all the cool things they're doing and training that they're doing. And the council members asked, so what are you doing? And the response they gave was, well, I'm a council member. I'm exempt from having to do any of this type of training. And that wasn't the right answer and it got kind of taken to task. So I've got another thought that maybe we need to do some more training or not. I was asked a question if we plan to create an empowered race equity committee. They're not looking, the ask isn't like what Bremerton is doing where they're creating a council committee. The ask is something along our council or like our planning commission. And I'm, I'm scratching my head right now. And when I was asked that question, what body of work that committee would do and what the, what the outcome is. I'm not, I'm opposed to it. And matter of fact, you're the policy board if you want us to create something like that. But I'm already getting, you know, if I'm looking to create a culturally, culturally diverse committee and, and put that together, who's going to staff that? And what resources are we going to put into it? And maybe we want to make that part of the budget process and discussion. But I have genuine concerns about getting people to serve on that committee that are within our community and in particular what, with what I'm struggling with, with our planning commission. All of us did some training of the, we picked our training, remember at the council retreat and the you guys, council members and I all did ethics training. You've all completed that. I thank you. Our staff as a whole, citywide, one of the trainings we picked was a diversity training. There are other courses on AWC do, you know, would it be worthwhile? And I've identified something, these are more geared towards police officers. But maybe it's, one of the steps we want to do is have more training and require it of everyone, council members included. They'd be online courses. So if you have a desire to do that, I think, you know, let me know. And I think we could accommodate that in an online courses. Building inspector?
Rob, can I ask a question? So one of my thoughts early on and not knowing really the background of the race equity task forces, is that something that KRCC could, could look at if all of the jurisdictions were to embrace at least the concept?
I, Beck serves on that too. I don't know that they would have the bandwidth or the, go ahead.
KRCC focuses on land use and transportation issues. We do have a provision for unique, what we call incubator ideas. And so I suppose it could be looked at as an incubator idea. I could bring that forth to the executive committee and see if they have, you know, an appetite for looking at that.
I would also suggest, you know, there, there's issues of equity that we have to address in the countywide planning policies. And so maybe rather than us individually tackling this as cities, I think that actually is a really good suggestion. And maybe it's, it's, we're about to hire a consultant to actually go through the countywide planning policies. But maybe there's some input into that particular chapter from another group.
Okay. Or at least we can do some outreach with that consultant to, to the, from, in that vein and create policies in our, in our planning policies.
The consultant is being hired to compare. The, um, the consultant is being hired to compare our countywide planning policies with Vision 2050. And I know Vision 2050 speaks a lot to equity issues. So that might be a really good fit.
Okay. Good questions. Um, Nick has been prodding me a little bit about his building inspector. His building inspector is current, our current building inspector is close to retirement. And uh, has been on a light duty for quite a while. And uh, due to the work volume that we have, him being on light duty hasn't been a bad thing for us because he primarily does plan reviews and we've been using our contract inspector uh, to uh, the physical inspections out in the field. Um, I, I have asked Nick to hold on until the end of July to get, uh, we've talked about this numerous times with the council. Particularly at the retreat that we would hire another building inspector, have a, you know, through this uh, economic boom in the housing industry. Have two as John retires and um, so I plan to bring that back to you probably the end of the month after we get our next glimpse of its sales tax. Um, because we're spending quite a bit of money on the contract inspector right now. And so we're, we're prepared with the, we've reviewed the job description when we're ready to um, take that out. But I'm just uh, just nervous about revenue still. And, and even though we've been, we've been faring pretty well. So. Um, so I'll bring, kind of bring that back uh, towards the end of the month and talk to you some more about that. Next week at the, uh, if you're not aware, uh, we select, we have selected Rice, Fergus Miller to do the, uh, the, the design work for our, the community center. Negotiation was with them for a scope of work and uh, they brought forward some modifications we need to make to the ILA with Public Facilities District. We're working on that body of work now and you'll see that at the work study next week. It's just, it's not, we're not asking the PFD for more money. It's just alloc, or reallocating the timing of it and the tasks. Website, I've sent you a couple of emails and hopefully you've noticed the tremendous amount of work that Ryan and Janine have put into our website. Standardizing the pages, um, putting new graphics and pictures out there. It's, it's just really looking nice. I missed the Economic Development Tourism Meeting yesterday because I was meeting with the port of Bremerton and our lobbyist and their lobbyist. They're pursuing a, uh, they want to pursue a capital uh, request for the Marina Breakwater, about a $15 million project. Josh and I have some serious, and they would like to, they're concerned that our, in our, in our ask likely this, this next session in January. And we're working the work plan for the community center is that we would be in Olympia looking for dollars for real estate acquisition. Once we determine the site of the community center. They would like to partner with us and have a joint ask of about $3 million. It's not a bad idea, other than right now Josh and I have serious concerns that their proposal. I'm going to use a Mark Dorseyism here, um, is a wish sandwich. They haven't put any, they don't have any dollars yet. This, this $2 million they're asking for is the first bite. And they've got a bunch of grants, one of which is a tiger grant that I, I think we all know they're not going to get a tiger grant for the breakwater. Um, so they, I, our, Josh and I asked them before us, before I would bring this to the city council. For your guys to consider this uh, potentially joint legislative ask that uh, they need to come up with a business plan. And how, or a funding plan for this. And they may need to, like we did at Tremont, commit to um, whatever means necessary from. Uh, they have, they have um, bank capacity uh, and their own revenues that they may need to pledge and, and in debt. And uh, so I need to see a plan from them before I'm going to uh, ask you guys to, to join with the port on, on this endeavor. And then lastly, I have uh, put a few, a couple of face, I got the face masks from Kitsap Transit. They're quite nice. Where's mine? I got mine in my back. They, they travel in my back pocket now because uh, they're quite nice, comfortable. And uh, they have the Transit logo on them. Um, I put a couple of them in each of the council members uh, mailboxes, except for Mr. Clausen. I think he has an abundance and of Kitsap Transit masks in his possession. So. Uh, with that, um, I would recommend uh, washing them or hand washing them ahead of wearing them. They have the, the new car smell when you first get them. So. With that.
Thank you for those.
You're welcome. Uh, and department directors. Noah, you've been patient and I let the chief go. You have anything else you want to share?
No, I'm good.
All right. You can take off. See ya. Have a good evening. Uh, Nick?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Noah.
Okay. Before you leave Noah.
Noah, I very much um, liked your office there, but I've noticed that you have not really sat at your computer. Is this an issue of separating public computer from private computer? Just curious.
That's, well, it's a virtual backdrop. That isn't his living room.
Oh, I didn't know that. I thought that was his office. He just lives in that kind of setting. So I just wanted clarification.
Okay. He looks more prestigious than he is.
Yes.
That was your boat too, John. So I think it's fair.
Well, I do have the keys to it.
Look at Beck's boat.
Beck's got a big boat.
He's got a big boat.
All right. Let's go on to Mr. Bond.
All right, Mayor. When you were talking about the building inspector, you asked me to report on some permit activity levels. And so I have some numbers and project descriptions I'm going to throw out just in terms of updating the council on activities in the city. Uh, year to date, we are now at 64 single-family residential building permits issued. And we have 23 more that have completed review and are ready to be issued pending payment. We have 10 more in for plan review uh, that are single-family. We also have now one multifamily apartment building that has, is ready to issue. And we have 12 more apartment buildings in the queue for review, which is a total of 264 apartments that are in for permitting.
So, hold on for a second. Hey, Brandy, can you watch for Sean? He got bumped off and he probably get to sit and be in the waiting room in a minute. So sorry about that, Nick.
Okay, that's okay. My dog was acting up. So it was good, good timing.
I just need Noah to uh, reassign me back to the host. And I can look out for him.
All right. So um, in terms of other projects, we also have, in addition to the 13 apartment buildings that are in for review and haven't yet issued. We. Sorry, my dog is, is really misbehaving at this moment. Um, we have uh, 291 additional multifamily units that I believe are going to be submitted before the end of the year. Stetson Heights, they are now pouring curbs and installing. Uh, they're getting ready to start paving in the next couple of weeks. That's 299 new lots coming on. Blueberry is also pouring curbs right now and that's another 106 lots that will be available here probably by the end of the year. The McCormick Woods Parcel A hearing is next Tuesday for another 49 lots. And they also have already submitted for clearing and grading permits so that they can hit the ground running as soon as the uh, hearing examiner decision is final. Um, McCormick North, if you've driven by it, Figley and Old Clifton, that site is, has been cleared and is under site development for another 84 lots. And then we also understand that the courthouse phase one plans are going to be coming in uh, sometime early next year. And so in terms of, of permit, plan review and volume, um, we definitely have our hands full. And it appears that we're going to have our hands full for uh, at least the next uh, 12 to 18 months.
Questions for Mr. Bond?
Nick, you just, you know, you threw out numbers there on the multifamily and so on. Do you have a total of how many units? Um, both single-family and multifamily, all those permits add up to?
I do, but I don't have it open in front of me. I, I've started making some estimates of that in terms of, of revenue. So um. Are you asking in terms of assessed valuation?
No.
No, no, just per unit. How many units are we bringing on to the city with all these permits?
Uh, I would, I would say through the end of next year, we may have as many as 400 units in 2021 with several hundred more in 2022 that are, are actively being designed and, and invested in.
Incredible. Thank you.
That is pretty impressive growth.
It is.
Hmm.
I think it's more than the 200 that we just went up or 300 or whatever you told us, Bear.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I wish this was, uh, this growth had occurred before the census so that we would see the uh, the bump in terms of our distribution of revenues and other things. But uh, I think it's, it's helpful regardless.
Nick, what do you think the um, expected success or completion of these projects will be? Are we pretty comfortable? They're all going to move forward?
Well, certainly anything that has broken ground, I expect to be completed. I think all of the projects that have broken ground are far enough along that nobody's going to, going to back out at this point. Um, the apartment projects. If they pay for the permits, which they, they've paid for plan review, if they actually pick up the permits, I think those will go forward. Um, in terms of the additional apartment projects coming in, um, I'm, I'm just talking to these developers and they're trying to compile their applications and get their, get their application in the door. Um, I'm fairly confident that those will come in and that if the economy uh, you know, stays close to where it is. I think that those will go forward simply because there's, there's such a demand for housing. Um, as far as, you know, the, in the, the council retreat back in, I think, January or February. I, I provided a map that showed everything going on in the city. And there's a whole lot more than what I've just listed that I, I'm less confident is going to happen in the immediate term. But I, I feel pretty confident about the projects that I've listed. There's also the commercial projects, the Arco, which is under construction, Dutch Brothers. And we also took in a permit for some commercial development. Uh, if you remember where Bruce Titus was parking cars on Bethel. There's a little commercial pad there that they had put in the, the pavement, but they hadn't actually built the buildings. That. That is moving for now as well. And um, there, that just went out for revisions in May and I'm expecting that to be resubmitted here soon.
That's still land title, building a building or somebody else could do it now?
I can't remember the name off the top of my head.
They owned it at one time. Okay. Other questions for Mr. Bond? Okay. Thank you, Nick. Mr. Dorsey?
I have nothing unless somebody needs to know what the definition of a wish sandwich is.
Two slices of bread and no meat in the middle.
Bow, bow, bow.
All right.
Well, actually, two slices of bread and you wish you had some meat.
And you wish you had some meat. Yes. Charlie?
Uh, just a reminder, the Open Public Meetings proclamation uh, has been extended to August 1st. So remote meetings will be um, a thing of the future until at least August 1st. We're estimating it'll be at least a couple more months of this. Um, but right now the legislature has signed off on August 1st.
Yep. All right. Thank you, Charlie. Brandy, your last but not least.
Yes. So just a reminder, I have a few council members' electronic key cards um, ready to be picked up. So um, I'm in the office all this week and all next week. Um, if I'm not available, Janine knows where they're at. So um, come on in when, to pick up your key card as well as your new mask.
Yeah. And uh, your, the keys you have probably won't work by about the end of the week. The locksmiths. Uh, we reached out to him today. So went over the last details on that. So um, come get your key card so that you're able to check your mail. So um, with that, I don't, anything for the good of the order?
Stay safe.
All right. You too. Stay safe. We'll see you later.
Good night.
Bye bye.